All right, we are ready to convene. City Council Regular Meeting for Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022. It is 6:03 PM. We have all members present and accounted for for roll call. Before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I want to say Happy Independence Day, our 186th anniversary for the state of Texas, March 2nd, 1836. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please take your seats and welcome tonight. Onto item number four, City Employee Recognizations and Employee Introductions. Chief Ron, you have the floor initially.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce this evening our newest member of the Garden Ridge Police Department, Shenhan Wang. He is our newest member. Come on up, Shenhan.[104.32][104.32][applause] He came to the country when he was about four. He's a San Antonio local, went to John Jay High School, did some other miscellaneous jobs, and then decided to get into law enforcement. We put him through the paces and he came out on top, so we offered him a job, and here he is today. And along with him, he has brought his wife, Sokka, his daughter Avery, and his son Eden. So I'd like to introduce the family to you, if you will please.[134.44][134.44][applause]
And we're looking forward to a great relationship with Officer Wang on board. So thank you very much. That's all I have right now, sir.
Thank you, Chief. We are excited to have you, Officer Wang, and your family, Sokka, Avery, and Eden. It's great to have you here, and thank you. We're excited to have you. Probably no more so in the room than Holly over there. Get you up to speed in a few months and start doing shifts. Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Nancy, a thank you note.
Yes. We have the city, the library, and the volunteers in the library received a thank you from Bork and Merlin Corcoran. They're thanking the city of Garden Ridge for establishing and funding a city library. They thank Wendy and Linda for managing and maintaining a tidy, warm, and welcoming atmosphere with many activities. And thank you to the volunteers who shelve and check out and make the library a better place. And thank you to the patrons who donate their books. That was the only thank you tonight. And the next item up is employee anniversaries for the month of March. Robert Mann, one year. Matt McKenzie, two years. Joe Timke, five years. Karen Ford, seven years. Officially, yesterday was her seventh year. Steve Dennis, seven years. And Eric Noman, also known as Santa, 15 years.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it. Anything else?
No, that's all I have tonight, sir.
Karen, congrats on seven years yesterday. Outstanding. Okay, item number five is a Texas Department of Transportation Updates Discussion with our representative for this area, Mr. Will Lockett. Sir, if you'd come forward. So Will Lockett was gracious enough to come by tonight to give us a quick update on how the construction of 2252 is going and any updates around our local area we'd love to hear about. But I wanted you to be here tonight to publicly recognize you and Tech Dot, but specifically you, sir, for everything you do for all of us in the city of Garden Ridge and for Comal County. You're a very busy individual as our representative. You are always there on the phone or on an email to get right back to us or with a text. And I'm just one of a thousand people that you willingly give your time to. So thanks for what you do. Specifically, I wanted Will to come by tonight to say thank you for his efforts and tenacity to help us make the intersection of FM 2252 and 3009 a safer place to drive. We've had a lot of accidents there in recent years, and we finally succeeded in, with your help, sir, and Tech Dot, and the community in this council, succeeded in getting a yellow flashing light installed there for left-hand turns on 2252 and 3009 to hopefully take down our accidents that we have there and make a safer intersection for everybody and a safer place for everyone that comes through Garden Ridge in that area. There were a lot of people to thank for that. Will Lockett is number one. Tech Dot is a billion-dollar-a-year organization that doesn't move on a dime. It takes time to get the organization to change things and get projects going. And Will, through his tenacity, as I mentioned, helped that process and helped us improve that intersection in less than a year. And I think that that's remarkable, actually, to be able to do that. I also want to thank members up here at the dais that have worked, that I know of, the past year, working with, directly with Mr. Lockett. Lisa, I know you've been working hard with that. Jesse, as well. But specifically, I want to also point out, Councilmember Kay Bauer has worked diligently with you over the last year to bring that, to bring some sort of solution to fruition and to reality. It took everybody. It wasn't just Will, Tech Dot, and the council and city staff. It was also our residents and our concerned citizens getting out there on social media and getting on the Tech Dot website to make their, and getting on the phone, to make their opinion known. And it took everybody to bring this sucker across the goal line. So thanks to everybody out there watching tonight. Thanks to members of the dais, city staff, and obviously the council. And thank you, Mr. Will Lockett. We appreciate what you do. So thank you.[479.12][479.12][applause] And sir, I'll turn it over to you to give us an update on 2252.
Okay. Is the mic, red means it's working? All right. It's new technology.[492.12][492.12][laughing] Thank you for the, just the appreciation. Often in my position, that goes kind of quiet. So thank you for that. Thank you for everybody. I believe I received an email from everybody up here about the intersection. So it's good that we can react as quick as we did. You kind of, you hit the nail on the head when you said it doesn't move that fast. And, you know, one comparison I start to use is, you know, we're not like Amazon. You can't order it on Monday and get it on Wednesday. It takes us some time. But I appreciate everybody's patience and understanding that it, we move at the speed of government. And sometimes it seems like your voices aren't heard, but they are. And so thank you all for communicating with me and for having that patience as I worked with the folks at the district office. But hopefully that'll resolve some of the issues. Please continue to keep an eye on it. If we're still seeing abnormal number of accidents at that intersection, the next step's probably to go to the protected phase only, to where you get rid of the blinking yellow arrow and folks can only make a left on the solid green arrow. That'll cause some other delays, but we have to weigh the pros and the cons. Just to give an update on our 2252 bridge project at the Civilo Creek, we are moving tremendously well. Traffic's been moved onto the new bridge. Our contractor has completed all the drill shafts, so that's all the sub-level underground work that people don't see. The next step is to build the bridge columns, build the abutment caps, and the bit camps. And we'll probably start setting our bridge beams where, March, probably mid-May, I'd see setting beams and deckwork in June. But talking with my project manager, we're hoping to have that project complete by the end of the summer. So moving really good, really good as well. The larger expansion project that includes the overpass over the tracks, still on course to let in May of 2023. We had to push it back to include the 3009-2252 intersection considerations, adding some more turn lanes, expanding, I believe, all four legs of the intersection. And so that's kind of pushed us back, I believe, we're looking at nine months from when we originally said it was going to let. But talked with the designer, and we're still on track to let in May of 2023. So progress is being made. Appreciate your patience.
Counsel, anything for Mr. Will Lockett, the man of the hour? Lisa.
I'll start with thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The citizens really are pleased with the changes, and we hope it, we hope it makes a difference. I feel like it will.
Yes.
My mic went off. Couple of things. We still have a lot of complaints about people trying to get out in the mornings on 3009, you know, from the side where all the neighborhoods are. You know, I mean, it's like playing Frogger, trying to get, pick the right chance to get across. In addition to 3009, we always hear lots of complaints from Trophy Oaks, from people going in there to, my mic's going off. Using the Trophy Oaks entrance, you know, as a turnaround. Is there anything that we can do about those two things in particular? Any ideas?
Well, the, 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 the,[866.24]
Many people being in the same boat, we felt like we need to look at some other method to try to get people through the door. So, so far, we have the City of Shirts and the City of UC that are very interested in joining us, and we just have started putting out feelers. So, we can have up to fifteen cities, and we'll do it in here. It'll be April eighth and ninth. It'll be from ten to two on each one of those days, and that's a Friday and a Saturday because we're trying to capture maybe people that work all week or work on the weekends so they can come whenever, just to try to make it more convenient. Other than that, I don't really have anything else if you have any questions about that. And that's it.
Thank you, Karen. I did mention last week to the Northeast Partnership mayors about our multi-city job fair, and then Nancy and I will make sure that we announce that next week, next Thursday, at the Northeast Partnership luncheon for the month as well. So, hopefully, we get some more people or cities signed up. Thanks for doing that.
Okay.
That's great. Any questions for Karen?
I think, I'm sorry, Mayor, I think we ought to have a non-retirement party on April first at First Friday in honor of Karen not leaving. And anyone else who might have a birthday or something on that day.
I guess that April Fool's joke is really on me.
It's been on a few of us. Thank you, Kay. Thanks, Karen. Okay, on to City Secretary Monthly Report. Marissa, ma'am, floor is yours.
Couple of things I just want to point out on my report. The first one is the March water bill. So, we did discover an administrative error in the rate structure, and our customers were charged incorrectly for their March water bill. The amount is pretty minimal. However, we did reissue bills and we reprinted them, and postage goes on them tomorrow. They will go to the post office on Friday, so everyone will be getting new bills to reflect what the rates should be. And we also extended the due date by a week since these bills will be coming a week after the first bills, and we are waiving late penalties for this month as well. For anyone that's already paid their bill, they'll be credited the difference, and the automatic drafts will be processed using the correct bill amount. So, if you have automatic draft, you don't need to do anything, don't need to make any changes. And then, we've just encouraged everyone that they can call City Hall if they have any questions about this. The next thing I wanted to just highlight is the May City of Garden Ridge election. We did the drawing for the place on ballot. I sent the names over to the county, and as soon as we receive a sample ballot from them, that will be posted on our website. And I just wanted to remind everyone the last day to register to vote, in order to vote in the May election is April seventh. And then, the last thing is on the Garden Ridge Emergency Alert System, we did do a welcome message on Thursday, February seventeenth. It went out to one thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven recipients. If you didn't receive the welcome message and you're hearing this right now, whether you're here or watching, that means that you need to go and sign up for the Emergency Alert System. You can go on our website, click the Alerts graphic button on the homepage, and go to sign up. If you did receive the message and you want to change your communication preferences, you can also go to the same place and hit Modify. You can have a full control of how we communicate with you on your account. Other than that, I, that's all.
Counsel, anything for Marissa? Okay, the only thing I want to add is, once the administrative error was found with our water billing, the error was corrected immediately, and the whole process correction-wise and what Marissa just briefed was very well handled by the city staff, and in particular, in particularly to Marissa. So, great job on that.
Thank you.
So, thanks. Okay, on to Chief, Item D, Police Department Monthly Activity Report. Sir, floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Most everything I want to cover is already in the, in the monthly report. I wanted to emphasize a couple of things. One is the Refuse to Be a Victim class that is coming up on March the twenty-sixth. We still have some openings. For those that are interested, give Jill a call here at the Police Department. She can get you signed up for that. We've still got room. And the only other thing I wanted to throw out there, in case y'all have noticed, if you drive by the park, the flag is not being flown right now. We had a little incident the other day. Somebody went in there and made a wide turn and smacked the flagpole and, and tweaked it and bent it, and so, we were afraid the flag would come down. So, we're going to have to have a new flagpole put in. We've already been in touch with that individual. Thanks to the security cameras, we were able to get their license plate number, so we will take care of that, and we were working with Public Works to get that taken care of through a flag company as quick as we can, and it will be hoisted back up when we get it fixed. That's all I've got, sir.
Thanks, Chief. That was, when I stopped by there on Monday, that was a question I had. Asked Chief that question, why isn't the flag up? Thank you for that. Counsel, anything for Chief? Okay, thank you. On to Item E, Public Works Department. Stephen, floor is yours.
For the month of February, the Public Works Department, we held a Storm Brush Disposal Event on February ninth, tenth, and eleventh from ten to three, and on the thirteenth and fourteenth from eight to five. Eight dumpsters were filled during that event. We also replaced ten street signs that were faded, purchased new wireless microphone system for the community center, put in an order to replace heating elements for the community center's heating system because they went out, and we did, conducted crack sealing on Blue Bell. We currently have six dogs. Two just were picked up on February twenty-eighth on Comanche Pass. Three have been vetted. Two of those three are spoken for currently. One is available, and the fourth one has some medical issues that still need further attention. As a reminder, the weekend dumpsters will be this month on the weekends. That's what I have for the Public Works side.
Thank you, Stephen. Counsel, anything regarding Public Works for Stephen? Okay, sir, this floor is still yours with water.
Thank you. The Utility Department, we pumped forty-four point seven-five acre-feet from the Edwards, which leaves us five hundred and eighty-seven point one seven. We pumped five point seven-four acre-feet out of the Trinity. All routine water samples for the month passed. Our water loss for February went up to eleven point six percent. We also did, the Utility Department did some extra fire hydrant flushing in February and conducted a controlled ground storage overflow at the Shoenthal plant to remove some built-up calcium. There was also a contractor from outside the city limits that was caught hooking up to one of our meters to our system without the city's consent. They were fined and paid the amount that they said they took from our water system. I would also like to point out an error on the report under unaccountable unsold, the number for February. The number is, the correct number is two-one-three-one, and that's under the water loss area. Had one, too many digits in there. We also prepared and finished the Required Emergency Preparedness Plan outlined by Senate Bill Three that was submitted to TCEQ. The plan was developed to make sure that water utilities have adequate resources to provide water pressure at a minimum of twenty PSI for power outages lasting more than twenty-four Automatic draft customers' numbers are six-eighty-one. AMI customer portal profiles is six-hundred. Active leak info code alerts is one-fifty-seven, and E-billing customers is three-seventy-six. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Stephen. Counsel, anything for Stephen regarding utilities?
Yeah. We did a little bit more hydrant flushing this month. We had some reports of some sand coming out of somebody's faucet, basically one house, so we did extra flushing in that subdivision to remedy that. Sometimes, when water mains get installed, there's still residual sand and stuff left in them, and sometimes it just makes its way up into the pipes. I mean, it could be like years or something before that happens, but like I said, we did extra flushing to remedy that, and there was only one person really complaining about that in the subdivision. The truck that we caught taking water from our hydrant, we basically were going by how much they said they took, so there could have been more, I just don't know. It's one of those things, you want to catch them right at the beginning whenever they hook up to something like that. But also, as you can see on the report, I don't know if it's a trend or not, but February of last year is eleven point nine percent also. This month, I also had all of our meters checked at all of our well sites to make sure they're registering accurately also, and they're, they're accurate. So, I don't know if it's more of a, also, the less water you use, the less accurate you're going to be getting whenever you're pumping. It could be that, it could be a leak that we just haven't found yet. Overall, we're still under the national average, about seven percent.
One thing to point out on that is that that's the lowest usage of water in twelve months, and of course, it's a percentage, so you're dividing by a lower number, so yeah, the percentage is going to go up automatically, so keep that in mind, that the less water you use is going to drive that up.
John, anything else?
Oh, no. Just curious about twenty-one thousand. That was two thousand.
It's two thousand, yep. Jesse?
Yeah, it was good to see the uptick on the Edwards well usage. I'm glad you're starting to use some of that, and I appreciate the help from the Water Commission on helping you with that. And the other part is, I've seen, it seemed like a ten percent increase on AMI portal users in the last six months, so that's a good increase. Good to see the public sign up for those. Thank you.
Todd? Kay?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen. All right, Item eight F, Library Monthly Report. Linda, ma'am, floor is yours.
Good evening. As your local historian and diffuser of knowledge of great information, I wanted to give you a couple of updates on the importance of March second. Now, I kind of wanted to sound smart and use a different word for historian, and I looked up and found hagiographer, and I thought, mm, no, just no. Also antiquarian, and then I thought, well, you know, antique, so, which also means bookworm. Anyway, the first birthday I want to celebrate is Dr. Seuss. He's important because Dr. Seuss taught us that, that poetry is humorous, and it can be a lot of fun, and a lot of people learn to enjoy it from there. He gave us some great lessons in life. Today, you are you; that is truer than true. There is no one else who is you-er than you. And he, he sort of went into philosophy when he said, "Today, I shall behave as this is the day I will be remembered." That's pretty deep when you think about it. Anyway, another birthday, and Mayor, I would never, ever correct you, but if I did, this would be the time. And I shouldn't have mentioned that hag word, should I? Anyway, today is the anniversary of the Republic of Texas, not the State of Texas. It became independent in eighteen thirty-six, a hundred and ninety-six years ago. Fifty-nine delegates who called themselves Texians were at Washington on the Brazos, and they signed a Declaration of Independence. I'm very proud to be a Texan, a sixth-generation Texan at that, and I suppose I was inspired by Dr. Seuss, so I wrote a little ditty, and I assure you that Shakespeare is safe, if you'll indulge me. It happened back in eighteen thirty-six on March second. Independent mind heard freedom beckon. Because of Santa Anna, a cruel dictator, they sensed there had to be something greater. So, between the boos and bickering, with freedom's light flickering, in a move of rash, these rash desperados, they signed a decree with a flourish of bravado. They said, "We'll no longer be called Mexicans. From now on, we choose to be Texians, to run our country, which we call Tejas, a republic, not a state, completely our own boss." And while they, while they debated, the Alamo was lost, but this gave them the will to win whatever the cost. Forty-nine days later, in an eighteen-minute window, Sam Houston was victorious at San Jacinto. So, there are no ifs, ands, or maybes. The Texian said to Santa Anna, "Hasta la vista, baby." So, I, I use my time wisely.
Yes, you did, and I stand corrected.
Do you have any questions?
Wonderful job. Yes, ma'am. Anybody have any questions for our library?
No, just too fun. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. That was awesome. Thanks, Ms. Linda. Okay, with that, we'll move on to Item number nine, an update from our City Engineer, Project Status Reports, Mr. Sam Johnson. It's good to see you. And the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening. I don't know how I can follow that report. I don't have a nursery rhyme or anything. I'll be pretty short this evening. The only thing I want to mention on the twenty-two fifty-two project that is, is still going along as planned, we do have all the drainage information finally from Texas, so we're proceeding with our design. So, I'm anticipating maybe April, we'll complete that design for the intersection, and then, we can get, start coordinating with Texas on getting everything finalized. As far as land development, I've been reviewing a couple of master development plans. One of them that's not listed, but for Bat Cave, I've been working with the engineer and the developer, trying to get the requirements that, you know, Garden Ridge goes by in his master development plan. And also, there's another one for a ready-mix facility that I've started reviewing today. So, yeah, that's my report.
Thanks, Sam. Counsel, questions for Sam Johnson? That was quick. Hasta la vista. Thanks, Sam. Okay, Counsel, we're going to throw a curveball into here before we continue on to Item number ten, and we are going to recess for five, perhaps ten minutes, for closed-session consult with our city attorney, and then, and we will convene in closed session back in my office, and then, everyone else can stay right here, and we'll come back out and reconvene in open session. So, with that, we are in recess at six forty PM for consult with, in closed session with our city attorney. And we will go straight into the zoning board of adjustment process by opening a public hearing. The City Council of the City of Garden Ridge, Texas, will conduct a public hearing Wednesday, March second, twenty twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, seven oh five PM, City Council Chambers of Garden Ridge City Hall. The purpose of the public hearing will be to consider a petition by Michael Dumgarde for variance to ordinance number thirteen dash twelve twenty eighteen, Section Five, Residential, five dot one dot two dot five dot two, to allow a fifty-four percent impervious cover limit on property located at ninety-six twenty Trophy Oaks Drive for the construction of a pool with outdoor kitchen, poolhouse, and garage slash shop. The point eight-one-eight-zero acre property is further known as Lot Thirty-Eight, Block Two, Trophy Oaks Subdivision, Garden Ridge, Texas. Impervious cover limit in single-family dwelling residential district is thirty-five percent of the lot area. With that, I would invite the petitioner, Mr. Dumgarde, in your representation to come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Number, my name is Law Kevin. My name is Attorney of Law Department, Kevin, address is one zero one zero one, Reunion Place in San Antonio. I'm here on behalf of Mike Dumgarde. This is Mike. Mike, you don't have to stand here the whole time, you can have a seat. You're really creepy if you stand behind me the whole time, so I appreciate that. We've got a PowerPoint, and I think this is the control for the PowerPoint, but someone's going to bring that up. I really appreciate y'all taking the time to hear our variance request. Mayor, you kept the meeting going at a fairly quick pace, and I certainly won't be as entertaining as your in-house historian, and I'm a lawyer, so I get paid to talk for a living, I get paid to talk very slowly, but I will try to be respectful of your time this evening. So, so Mike Dumgarde is trying to build a pool in his backyard over on Trophy Oaks Drive, right down the street from here. He went to P&amp;Z, just for a little background, went to P&amp;Z a few weeks ago. P&amp;Z did not recommend the variance, and I was, I had not been hired yet, not that me being there would have made a difference, but we'll be presenting information to you in a different way than was presented to P&amp;Z. So, I know they had a split vote, but ultimately, they did not recommend approval of this. So, here's his property marked on the map. There it is, close up. You can see his properties right there. There's some pools behind his property. So, he's, as you know, asking for variance from thirty-five percent impervious cover limit. It'll be fifty-four percent based on what his contractor has told him. So, this is a lot, as you can see on the top of the screen, that dashed line, that's a utility easement in the back of the property. Along the front is a building setback line. See the, the street kind of curves, and then, right in the middle is the existing house. Here's a close-up of the pool and how it will lay out, and you can see the, it's an outdoor kitchen, it's all part of the overall pool structure, but I think this is a little bit better picture, so you can see the pool, you've got a beach entry, it's, looks, looks beautiful, it's got the, kind of, swim bar with the kitchen kind of attached, all as one structure. Ultimately, this becomes a little bit more than fifty, is about fifty-four percent, or less than fifty-four, fifty-four percent impervious cover. He's owned our residential, which is a thirty-five percent impervious cover, so that's why we're here this evening. So, this is where it gets the really boring, slow part of my presentation, but again, I'm a lawyer, I'm paid to be boring and slow. But the, the City of Garden Ridge applies nine criteria when you're looking at a request for variance, and so, what I'd like to do is address each of those nine points and hopefully satisfy you, and then, answer any questions that this council may have. And so, the very first one is, this is a request for a change in use. It's owned residential, he's building a swimming pool. Clearly, a swimming pool is a residential use, again, to bore you with, with case law. There's a great case on a swimming pool, it's the Piney Point Village, Solar case, and they cited to a, an earlier case, including a family's entitled to build a swimming pool as an accessory structure, and noted that residential property isn't just the house, it's not just shelter, but also includes private recreational use, in that case, a swimming pool. Is the need for a variance due to unusual physical, topographic, or geographical features which exist on the property? Yes, the property is oddly shaped, you've got the easement in the back, you've got the curvature of the street, and you've got that building setback line. There's a case that has similar characteristics, the Schreiber case, I didn't include it in here, but the point is that this is not, where Mike lives, the lots along there are not the typical kind of cookie cutter. Every lot is a perfect rectangle, and everything looks the same, it's long a straight lawn. You've got topographic issues, every lot's a little bit different out there, which is a good thing, it's a good thing. Are the unique circumstances merely financial in nature? No, and this is, this is that case again on variance for a swimming pool. Mr. Solar and his family were deprived of the ability to swim on their property. Not a financial hardship, but a loss of the right to recreate, which we conclude constitutes an unnecessary hardship. By the way, the Solar case is interesting, and I have one more reference to it, I think, later in this presentation. What, what the property owner, Michael Solar, was doing is, had a house, and he wanted to build a pool, and the only way he could fit in was on his side yard. So, building setbacks are very analogous to impervious cover limit, limits basically the building envelope, and he'd gone to his Board of Adjustment in Piney Point, and said, "I need a variance, this is the only way I can really fit the pool on my property." The Board of Adjustment said no, and he went to District Court, the District Court overturned it, and went to Court of Appeals, so the citations I've shown you are from that Court of Appeals case. Is, next one of your criteria, were the unique circumstances created by the owner of the property? Clearly not. The property was platted back in nineteen ninety-seven, nearly twenty-five years ago, and so, he has, he had no control over the orientation of the lot or how it was designed. Curry v. Kimple is a tennis court case. Family wanted to build a tennis court in the backyard, had an oddly-shaped lot. What the court said there is, the fact that one to build a tennis court on a regularly-shaped lot does not constitute a self-created or personal hardship, it's the configuration of the lot that creates the hardship. This is the plat from nineteen ninety-seven. Mr. Dumgarde's property is outlined in red in the center of that slide. Will the variance substantially or permanently injure the appropriate use of adjacent conforming property in the same district? There are lots of swimming pools in Mr. Dumgarde's neighborhood. You can see on the aerial, if you look at all those little blue dots in among the trees, you got a lot of pools out there, so putting a swimming pool in his backyard certainly isn't going to change things. The other thing that, Mr. Dumgarde did this work, and had presented some of this information to the P&amp;Z a few weeks ago, is he, he looked at an aerial and started kind of charting out, knowing the, the limit's thirty-five percent, looked at other properties and said, "Well, what are other people in my neighborhood doing?" And, and I just pulled one because I don't want to hit you kind of ad nauseam with all of this, but here's a property a few blocks away from where he lives, and it's about fifty percent also, you can see, a little over fifty percent. Also, in this picture, you can see everybody's got a pool in their backyard in the neighborhood. Will the variance substantially weaken the general purpose of the ordinance, the regulations established for the specific district? Now, here's something interesting, is the fact that the City of Garden Ridge is currently considering changing your ordinance on impervious cover. I know the P&amp;Z had talked about it a few weeks ago. You have a draft ordinance, and the proposal on residential estate, which are lots that are three-quarters an acre, which is Mr. Dumgarde's, and point eight of an acre, so similar to Mr. Dumgarde's lot, proposals to raise it to fifty percent. And here is just a clip from the draft ordinance. Obviously, this has not been adopted by the city yet, or we'd be only asking for a very small variance at this point, but the proposal, at least, being considered by the city, and again, hasn't been adopted, is fifty percent. So, we don't think that asking for fifty-four percent goes against the spirit of the ordinance, especially since it, it looks like you're considering changing it. Will the variance adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare of the public? So, when we talk about the public, we talk about the general public, and we also talk about the, the public nearby. In this case, it's his neighbors. So, the HOA approved the construction of the pool, so I went to them back in December and got their approval. Actually, I think it went in November, they got the approval in December. Let me blow that up. So, I said, "Thank you for following the proper procedures for architectural review. We have agreed, but they stipulate you can't affect or impede the drainage of your yard or the neighboring lot." So, so the HOA in general, who represents the public for Mr. Dumgarde's purposes, has signed off on it. He also has a couple of letters. Carlos, you have those letters? Could you get them to Ms. Spencer, so she can give to the council? We've got a couple of letters in support from Mr. Dumgarde's neighbors. They're very short letters, but we'll have them passed down. But again, the public, who is most impacted by his use of the property and by putting a pool in the backyard, is in support. Is the variance contrary to the public interest? Again, going back to the tennis court case, and the public interest is really served in folks' ability to use their homes and their backyards as was intended, including recreational use. And again, this Curry-Kimple case, Kimpels were entitled to use their property to the fullest as it relates to family dwelling and place for family recreation, limited only to provisions of valid statutes and ordinance. In this case, and they're referring to state law, that article's the old, the old statute for boards of adjustment and variances specifically authorizes the variance procedure. So, so what the court said in Curry v. Kimple is, look, you can't fit that tennis court in under the existing regulations, but that's why we have a variance process, so that the, so the property owners, the Kimpels, could actually go out and build it and use the property as was intended. And again, I just want to finish up with that. Solar case, like I said, their Board of Adjustment had said no, the District Court had said, "BOA is wrong." Went to appellate court, the appellate court said, "Yeah, you have a right to have a swimming pool." The appellate court said, "Yeah, you have a right to have a swimming pool." And what they said at that case was, "When is here? There is no evidence of harm to any interest. And the undisputed evidence shows that failure to grant the request will deprive the property owners of the ability to swim on their property. It is an abuse of discretion to deny the variance." And so, with that, what I'd like to do is conclude our arcs and entertain any questions y'all might have, or I can sit down and, if you've got other folks that want to speak.
Thank you for your presentation, sir. Counsel, any questions at this time before we discuss it? Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Again, we will open the public hearing, 7:17. And people are welcome to come up and speak to the council. You're not required to sign up to speak, but if you do, please sign in with the city secretary after speaking. You're limited to one three-minute period. And if you submitted a written comment but choose to speak, then your written comment will not be read. And then, please state your name and address before your comments begin. Anybody interested in coming forward? Mr. Crowe?
Thank you. Michael Crowe, 8315 Wallwind Park. At no point do I have anything with this or any invested, whether it goes or not go. But I do have one question that's been bugging me. We are a septic community. I just finally saw a picture. I know, is he going to have to move his septic? Just one of the questions that wasn't addressed. And then, with that septic, is it spray or is it leach line? And what's the minimum requirements that's for that septic not to, not to infect the neighbors? That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. You need to go and sign in with City Secretary Marissa. Anybody else wish to come up and speak? Okay, thank you. Marissa, did you receive written comments that you need to read?
Before I read this, I'm going to pass the documents out to council that I received I received one comment. It is from Martha Stip at 21007 Cedar Branch. "I am against a variance request which would allow the 54% impervious cover requested by Mr. Michael Domgard at 9620 Trophy Oaks. I watched the P&amp;Z meeting where Mr. Domgard presented his case. The fact that he is trying to build a pool at the home he inherited because it was what his parents wanted for their grandchildren is not a valid reason to grant his variance. Also, Mr. Domgard intend to notify, does Mr. Domgard intend to notify the city of any violations he finds? It seems like the only thing that would accomplish would, this would be creating a lot of aggravation for the neighbors he reports. I do realize there is a possibility that some building could have been done without proper permits, which led to violating ordinance 13. The bottom line is the City of Garden Ridge has never granted a residential variance allowing for more impervious coverage than 35% as stated in ordinance 13. Our lot is almost the same size as Mr. Domgard's lot, but our house is less than half the size of his home. I sympathize with his dilemma. His parents overbuilt their lot. As a result, there can be no pool built at this location. Although unfortunate, it is the law. The 35% impervious coverage limit was set because we all had to have septic systems. The county required all lots with septic had to be at least three-quarter of an acre. I realize that with the new type of septic, septic systems, the three-quarter of an acre is no longer necessary, but it is important to keep in mind that the large lot sizes and the restriction on the amount of impervious cover set long ago are responsible for the aesthetic appeal that draws people to move here. We may no longer need the extra space for septic, but we need to protect the character of our residential areas that was created by the original ordinance. By approving this variance, the city will set a precedent basically nullifying our impervious cover ordinance. Please deny Mr. Domgard's variance request. Please continue to hold the maximum impervious cover on residential lots to 35%."
Thank you, Marissa. Yes, sir.
Is it on? Yes. Oh, good. Just really quickly, as a response to the gentleman's question, as a reminder to this body, regardless of whether or not you grant a variance, or if you do grant a variance, the applicant will have to comply with any and all other regulations that the city has in place with respect to the septic and those types of things. So, they would still have to comply with that, even if you did decide to grant a variance. Also, as a reminder, you're acting in, as you know, and as was announced by the mayor, you're acting in the capacity of his zoning Board of Adjustment. I do recognize that you had a P&amp;Z recommendation. However, any decision you make tonight should be based on the information received at this public hearing and at this meeting. And so, to the extent that you receive that information at this meeting, it would be proper to be utilized for your decision-making.
Thank you, sir. Okay, counsel, it is time to discuss and take action on a possible recommendation for the request for variance from Mr. Domgard. So, I will open it up to my right.
That's a pretty healthy increase over a 35% from, you know, it's a, over a 54% increase. I'm, I hate to set a precedence on that, first of all, but that's just not really that big a deal. I just, I just think it's too big, too much for this area.
Okay, thank you.
So, the standard is that there needs to be a hardship that is unique to the property. There's a practical difficulty in making use of the property. And I guess where I keep ending up is a little bit with John, is that, that it's a big leap. 19% is a big leap, you know, from 35 to 54%. And I'm, you know, wondering, wondering, you know, with the different components, the percentages are for the different components that are proposed? Pool, poolhouse, shop, outdoor kitchen?
Do you have a specific question then for Mr. Domgard?
Mr. Domgard, can you, could y'all elaborate on the percentages each of those things take to the property?
So, that's a great question. I did revise the numbers, but I didn't have the proper numbers before the holidays, when I tried to get this out so it could get into the newspaper in time to hopefully not have a 90-day delay or longer on the pool. It is 51.5% for the total project. Originally, it was just going to be the pool. And when I was speaking with Nancy, she advised me to go ahead and put in a garage if I wanted to try to get that later with the poolhouse, because if I tried to do it later, there's no way I would get a variance twice. So, the whole project was done, included. Where this actually arises, the problem arises ahead of time, is when we submitted the pool for a permit, they're like, well, you're going to be pretty close to that 35%. What kind of driveway space do you have? Because the driveway wasn't included. And so, it was going to be at 35%, just under 35% include, and plus driveways. So, that's where those numbers came from. The total percentage is now 51.5%. And then, you know, they're, I mean, that's, that's, that's with the whole project. I think the number I submitted to Nancy was, I don't remember what it was with the pool minus the garage shop. It was an email I sent to her, 40, 44%, I believe. So, but I'm 44 or 47, maybe. So, as far as the septic system goes, in the original septic plan, the pool was included as a future addition. And so, the septic was actually designed for a pool in that position. And you can see that in the septic design plans.
Nancy has something?
The email that I received from Mr. Domgard on January 31st was, "Just adding the pool and small perimeter deck was 45.5%. Pool and poolhouse slash garage equals 51%."
And just a question. I'm thinking about, again, going back to the hardships. And so, the proposed hardship is that without a 19% increase in impervious cover, that the family won't be able to?
The hardship is not being able to have a pool in his backyard. And I, I know, you know, you're thinking, well, is that really a hardship? But that's, that's just the law in Texas. I mean, they look at recreational facilities, tennis courts, and swimming pools. And, and that is the hardship, is not being able to have a pool. I, I know it might sound silly, but again, that's, the law is the law.
Right.
Anything else? Thank you. Jesse?
Yes, a couple of things. On, on the question that you answered no, were the unique circumstances created by the owner of the property? He said the property was platted that way. Well, the thing is, the house was, you know, it's a large house. It had, you planned a pool originally, so it was all platted for the, I mean, it was, the plan was all to include a pool. And it's not the pool at say, it's just the ground you're covering that's the issue. So, that's what's taking the impervious cover. So, I disagree with that answer. That should be a yes. And the, the last question that had to do with, you know, residents, we had a, we had one resident that spoke, that sent a letter in, that said, yeah, that's, they didn't, you know, they were against it. So, there are some residents out there. And I'm sure there's others that, that would say, you know, no, maintain 35% is an ordinance. So...
Appreciate that, sir. You want me to respond to that comment?
You can.
Yes. So, again, it was platted in 1997. He didn't, he didn't own the property at that point. And so, that established the parameters. He didn't put the utility easement in there. The building setback line was established, the curvature of the road, those are all factors outside of his control. He didn't build the house. The house was built in 2015, 2015, before he acquired it. So, it would be self-created if he were creating the hardship.
But the thing is, you're saying, you know, you still can build a pool within that platted area, right? You're saying, you're still saying that you can build the pool within the limits of the setback lines, the easements and all that, right? That has nothing to do with the impervious cover.
It does, it does add, it does lend itself to the uniqueness of the shape of the property and some, and construction developing.
But you're still covering the land. It doesn't, it doesn't matter that you're, you're still covering the land.
Actually, councilman, because of the building setback, if you could have built the building, the house closer to the street, you would have more backyard.
Okay, okay.
So, it does impact your ability to develop that. And again, this was, this predated his acquisition of the property.
I understand now. Thank you for that correction.
Thank you, Jesse. Todd?
And maybe I'm not completely up to speed on all of this. There's an easement in there. That easement was included in the percentage of, in the size of the land that we used for the calculation, or, or it's not? I guess it's maybe more of a staff question. It's the total lot, including the easement, was used to figure the percentage.
The easement should be considered as size in the total lot size.
That's kind of a, just a clarification question I had, because, you know, the number goes down if we include the easement, if it wasn't before. It sounds like it was, the total lot was, was the calculation. Fundamentally, I don't have a problem with this. I, I would hate to set a large precedence. And then, my mind goes, yeah, but wait a minute, we've got three-quarter of an acre lots. For this to be a real problem, we're going to be building some awfully monstrosity houses. I think maybe 54% is a bit much. Now, we're down to 51. Yeah, I guess I don't have any, I don't have a real issue with it, to be very honest, in this case. I, I don't think we're going to set a dangerous precedence. I think our lots are so big and we have so few lots left, any new build isn't going to be an issue with whether we do go to 50% or 35% or what we, whatever we decide to go with. I'm thinking out loud more than anything here, so I'll quit. I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Kay?
Yes, sir. I have a number of issues. First of all, I don't see any report of a drainage study. I also note that the Architectural Board's approval notice said, "An approval in no way supersedes the restrictions or requirements of the city." I also note that the approval is for specifically a pool. So, I don't see adequate documentation on that. I, I question the vagary, if you will, of the, all the other homes in the neighborhood are oversizable. Even if they are, this does not allow us permission to say, so they're all wrong, so we're going to let you be wrong too. These rules, this ordinance is in place for a reason. I was on planning and zoning for approximately 15 years. I've been active in the community since 2000, when I moved here. I can find no justification for this. I have a pool. My lot is an unique size, and I had to downsize my pool. I, I mean, I didn't build it, but when it was built, it had to be downsized to accommodate my lot. I have a very shallow but wide lot. I also, I, I am aware that you inherited this property, or you inherited it with the right to purchase it. But I also, I, I, I don't mean to be crass, but the term buyer beware, I don't think a person, regardless whether it be you, me, or anyone else. I did incredible documentation before I moved to this city, from the city of Houston, to be sure that I could do what I wanted to do before I even bought my house. And I don't understand why a person would go in and think, well, I can go do this just because it's a gated community, or just because this, or all my neighbors have it. I don't also see, like I said, documentation of the sizes. I think that's a random remark. And I also, we need to keep in mind that we keep referencing 50%. This is not a document yet. As of today, and until this, until and when this is approved, this is a 35% impervious cover law by which we must abide. And that's all I'm going to say for now.
Thank you, Kay. I have a couple of questions, sir. So, what is requested in the request for variance is 54%. We are now told that actually it's down to 51%. And that includes the pool, the surrounding deck, the poolhouse and garage slash shop. Is that correct? And it'd probably be less awkward if he came on back up. Thank you. So, we're at 51%?
That is correct.
Correct? Okay. And then, you have said that with the pool and surrounding deck only, we are at 45.5%. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. What do you have documentation-wise that says, hey, this is what it's going to be, 45.5%? Is it, that's from your designer, or that's your opinion?
So, no, this, well, it wasn't an opinion. So, what I did is I took the actual square footage of the lot, which we didn't have, we estimated on the first one with my builder, because I didn't have those numbers. And it was a rush to get those numbers. And then, I took the actual square footage given to me by the plans from the pool, and then with the, the other perimeter that I added. And so, when I did the new math based off the actual size of the lot, that number came down. So, that's why the number was, came down. It wasn't, it was a best guess to begin with, and then it became an actual number when I, when they asked for an update.
Okay. So, I appreciate you going from best guess to an actual number. But I think with all the questions from counsel, acting as a zoning Board of Adjusters, that we'd like to see that math and, and documentation thereof, that it's not 50, it's not 54%, it's not 51% for the pool and the surrounding deck. It is 45.5%.
Yep. So, the, what you have, so you have, the, the pool drawing has the square footage, I believe, on that schematic. And then, I took the home square footage as defined on my blueprints, but I could provide those to you, but the city has it as well, the perimeter. And then, I had to go out and actually measure all of the driveway, because most driveways aren't actually included in those figures. So, when I went on the ci-
So when I went on the Comal County guys, and I'm clicking on different homes in my neighborhood, because I wasn't aware that that data existed, so when I took the video or the pictures prior, I used my drone. Well, now I have Google image search with that plot lines, but if you click on homes, it'll give you square footage. But driveways aren't included in those square footage, and a lot of times pools weren't included in that square footage. So going through, and through my neighborhood, I was able to find neighbors that are over that percentage without the county knowing, and probably actually the city as well, so.
Okay.
Just, so that's where I was getting that information from.
Okay, thank you. I think with the questions from council, it's not something with their questions that we would, as a zoning board of adjusters, acting city council, that we would deny you the right to build a pool and to, to use a pool with you and your family on your yard. I, I think the question is, that is a large request for, request for variance from the current impervious cover limit of thirty-five percent. And we're going up to, what we have written down is fifty-four percent, maybe fifty-one percent, and then forty-five point five percent for just the pool and the surrounding area. Would you be amicable for the, this board to look at just the pool and the surrounding deck area?
Yeah, I mean, so the, again, with the garage and the pool.
Can you turn on your mic? I don't know if it's on.
Off. With the garage and the pool, that was, or the garage and the pool house little area, and really it wasn't a pool house, it's more of like a, just a place where people who are wet can go if it, you know, it's a small space. That was a wishlist. I would still have to get that approved for my HOA, which would be an uphill battle in and itself.
Okay.
But that was just so I knew where my ceiling was. So would I be amicable for just the pool? Yes. Are there other ways for me to get my impervious coverage lower and still build the entire project? I'm actually investigating those now by putting in different types of concrete, so, and actually using a permeable concrete. So there's a chance I could do my entire project regardless, because I have so much driveway and, driveway and circle drive, that I could put in a permeable concrete and probably get it thirty-five percent for the whole project, because that driveway is so massive. And so there are other options I, I could, you know, look at later. I don't, I don't know how the city council feels about that, but it would still have the appearance of fifty-one and a half percent impervious coverage, when in fact it wouldn't be anymore.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Thank you. Council, any other questions for Mr. Dom Garden or his council?
I have a question for you later.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Before we ask questions of me, does anybody have questions for our city council regarding this decision? Or discussion?
Nancy, could you bring me up to date on what's going on with our zoning ordinance as far as residential? I didn't think we were considering up to fifty percent.
Yes.
Whether, I'm going to interrupt, sorry, Nancy. Whether or not you're considering fifty percent or not, Councilman Bauer is correct. The current rules on the book are thirty-five percent.
Council, still open for discussion. John, you had a question for me?
No. I changed my mind.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add?
Well, I liked your idea of maybe coming back with a, with just the plan for the pool and the decking.
Anything else? John, go ahead.
My question had to do with, can he withdraw it at this time and resubmit instead of, yes?
We're going to, we're going to touch on that here in just a second. Anything else, Lisa? Jesse?
Yeah, I'm more interested in hearing the different options, so I think going back to what you were, going to come back to, so.
Okay. Todd? Kay?
Should it be approved, a fifty-four percent impervious cover can have a significant drainage impact. I'd like to see a drainage study.
Okay, thank you. For our city attorney, are, are we okay to say, hey, we would like to see more data on just the pool and the surrounding deck area?
Absolutely.
Then come back to us within a month, still come back in our April meeting, so we don't delay Mr. Dom Garden's project inevitably?
Yes, sir. You can absolutely postpone, make a request for additional information and postpone the hearing until a date certain.
Does that require a motion or a consensus of council?
I think, given the nature of the proceedings, a motion would be the appropriate manner.
Okay, thank you, sir. So the question that, so what we are talking about here is asking Mr. Dom Garden and his council for more information regarding simply the pool and the surrounding deck area, and what the exact amount of impervious cover that would be for the total lot coverage. That's what we're asking here.
Can we ask also additional options that he was looking at to maybe provide, replace him with previous cover, with previous cover? You know, you mentioned other ideas that he was looking at, driveways or things like that, so.
Yeah.
I think I'd like to see options.
So, I, I think that that information goes to the question of whether or not a hardship actually exists, and you can consider it, but I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's, I mean, you can ask for it, but I don't know that it's necessarily relevant to the, the request. That, the request is a nineteen percent variance to your current regulations. The question's before you are, is there a hardship? And is there a hardship? What is the amount of variance you believe is appropriate to grant based on that hardship? I, I, I don't normally give legal advice in public, and this really isn't legal advice. However, I guess I would say that the case that is being referenced is factually different than the factual circumstances here, and that the, that Mr. Kellen may be correct. It may be the law in Texas that you're entitled to have a pool on your property. I don't know that I agree with it. It's certainly correct in that particular district with that particular factual situation, but they're not, neither are they entitled to the biggest, grandest possible pool they can get. That's certainly not the law in Texas. And so, again, the question before you is, is there a hardship? And if there's a hardship, what is the variance that they would be entitled to? And it certainly would be appropriate, would be okay for y'all to postpone this hearing to get more information in order to assist you in making that decision.
Thank you, council. Okay, so the, the, the choice is yours, council, on how you'd like to proceed here. We have an option to say we'd like some more information based on the discussion we've had from Mr. Dom Garden on specifically the pool and the surrounding deck area. What is that impervious cover percentage going to be? And if there is a hardship, bring that information back to us. In April, we will reconvene this public hearing and get that information from him at that time, decide if there's a hardship, and what amount of variance you would, you would grant. The other thing that's on the table is outright acting with a motion on this request for variance. So it's still open for discussion until we have a motion.
I'll go back and reiterate what other council members have said, about fifty-four percent being a set of precedent, and it's way out of line from our current ordinance, so that's my statement.
Mr. Mayor, my approach, thank you. I appreciate Mayor, council members. I know we've had a long discussion, and speaking with Mr. Dom Garden, we'd like to come back at your next meeting, present a revised set of plans that narrows the scope of the variance, gives you additional information. We've heard a lot of great questions. Want to come back and address it and, and give you the additional information. So again, this is up to you, you have to vote on it, but again, we would be supportive of the continuance of coming back, narrowing the scope and giving you additional information.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
I would like to put it off. I have no desire to vote against the swimming pool. So I'd rather him bring it back at a later date.
Okay, so to be clear, we're not putting it off. We are requesting additional information to make a very informed decision as a zoning board of adjusters. Okay. Lisa?
Yes.
Jesse? Todd? Kay? Then I need a motion.
I make a motion that we requested, that we asked the petitioner to come forward with additional information to include, but not limited to, more specific information and a revised plat, or plat, I'm sorry, not plat, a revised plan for the proposed construction and the precise percentages, in addition to a drainage study, in addition to a subsequent and accurate report from the HOA to include exactly what Mr. Dom, Dom Garden is proposing. This is not to infer that it will be approved. This is for future discussion.
Okay, so we have a, a motion to request additional information to narrow the scope of the request for variance for impervious cover. Is that a, but then you added some things on to that?
So, can we, I'd like to make it kind of as easy as possible, if that's okay with y'all. How about a motion to postpone until the next regular meeting with a second? And I believe that the applicant has an idea of what they need to bring back for purposes of this. Do you need any more clarification?
I, I do not. The discussion, we've taken great notes, we understand. We can go watch the video tomorrow, so. We, we understand exactly what we need to bring back to you, and we're looking forward to seeing you next month.
I think that would just make it simpler. And then they'll bring what they bring, and it'll either satisfy you or it won't.
Thank you. Do we need to withdraw that motion and make a new one?
Well, there was no second, so dies for lack of a second.
Okay. Dies for lack of a second. Do I have another motion?
I move to postpone the petition until next month.
We have a motion to postpone the petition until next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Dom Garden, we will see you in April for a second round. Thank you, thank you for your patience. Yes, sir. Thank you, council.
And council, I'm going to interrupt the meeting and leave. First of all, I was not here just for this. I appreciate y'all allowing me to sit in place of the great Cynthia until she could get here to attend the rest of your meeting.
Thank you so much. It's very nice to meet you. Drive safely, please, everybody. Okay, continuing on with item number ten A two, receive recommendation regarding the appointment of Michael Crowe to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Place Five, with term expiring September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Karen Diaz, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, Dr. Michael Crowe, DBA, applied for the vacancies, one of the vacancies on planning and zoning. Michael was interviewed, and along with his impressive resume, was unanimously approved to be recommended to city council for appointment to Place Five on planning and zoning. Dr. Crowe is available for any questions you might have. Michael? I think most of you have met him.
Thank you, Karen. Dr. Crowe, please.
Mayor?
Anything you want to say to address the council before we make a motion?
Thank you.
It can be brief.
Thank you for taking time. Just a little bit about me, I live eight, three, one, five, Wall One Park. I'm not quite as nervous now as I was earlier. And also, I want to thank you guys for letting me ask questions, because that's one of the biggest things that I like to do, one of the biggest things I really got into, especially going from my doctor in business administration, is ask questions. And not only ask questions, but research those type of questions. And then, and it's, it's about data, it's about facts. I love opinions, but at the end of the day, they got to be supported by facts. So that's really my, my biggest motivation, that's the biggest thing that I try to, try to do and search for, is base their, my opinions is based off facts. So that's the main reason why I came up here and asked a question, because it was never addressed, which should be, which, which is simply the subject system and that requirement. So that's the type of, what I'm, what I like to bring to the committee is those type of questions, and that investigative attitude of, hey, get prepared, find out, and, and just do deliberation amongst, and find out the facts, so that way we can make informed decisions.
Thank you, Michael. All right, anybody have anything for Dr. Michael Crowe?
No questions, just appreciate you coming forward, and I like the, I like the fact-based approach.
Yeah, I listened to your interview, just questions, you know, with P and Z. I think you'll be a great addition to the commission. I thank you for volunteering, and I support the commission's recommendation.
Kay?
Yes, I, I was at P and Z, and I appreciate the interview and so forth in the process, and I particularly appreciate, oh, there she is, Chairman Diaz's questions to you to make you well aware of ordinance two-ten and the requirements, even though you are retired, that we, we feel it's important that you've come to the Diaz well-prepared and researched, and I believe you've expressed that. And you have two great dogs.
Kids.
We met about a year ago at an event in our neighborhood, and it was a pleasure to meet you then, and it's a pleasure to see you up here now, and thank you for volunteering. Council, with that, I would request a motion to approve the recommendation.
I'll make a motion to approve planning and zoning's recommendation and appoint Mike, Dr. Michael Crowe to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Place Five, expiring September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any further discussion? Call it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Chairman Diaz.
Just one more item.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to let the council know that Planning and Zoning will hold a public hearing on March eighth regarding proposed changes to the draft ordinance. And that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Council, any questions for Karen Diaz? No? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
It's good to see you. Onto item number ten A B, Quarry Commission. Quarry Commission did not meet in February, but they did meet in January, and Mr. Baruchki, please come forward and give us your report. Good to see you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and, and city council persons. Following all the trauma we've just been through, mine's relatively straightforward and, and quick. The Quarry Commission had its regular bimonthly meeting on January tenth. All commissioners were present. The regular session was relatively straightforward. I had a presentation by the Vibrotec monitoring service on the Hanson Quarry blast that occurred in, in November and December. Hanson initiated eight blasts in November and eight blasts in December. That's about as small an amount as we've had in a two-month period for several years. All sixteen blasts were well under the maximum allowed by the Bureau of Mines Standards and our Garden Ridge Ordinance Number Thirty-four. Likewise, the air overpressure readings for all the blasts were also under ordinance limits. There were no citizen impact reports, in other words, feedback and complaints from citizens about the blasting in November at all, but we did have three in December. And in our discussion of those reports, we did see that two of them were from the day that recorded the highest level, so there was some correlation there. And finally, the commission discussed the placement of blast monitoring units to see if we wanted to move them around to a different location. We decided to keep them temporarily in the current locations. And finally, the commissioner, excuse you, commissioners adjourned the regular session about seven-thirty. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions? John?
Yeah, have you had many complaints, any complaints in the last four months?
Yes, I, I actually have. Yes. I actually have the data. I could go take a look, and I have it right now. But yeah, it varies. We have had fewer complaints in this last year, and I had put together a spreadsheet, you know, that lists all of these over the last two or three years. And so occasionally, in the past, we've had like six or seven complaints for a month, and usually it's after a blast that everybody is affected. I will say this, that most of the complaints we get now are due to the quarry blasting in a relatively new area, the Aggie, they call it the Aggie pit now. And so we've had complaints from locations we never had before. I mean, it's like back off towards Bat Cave Road, you know, we never had to go that far, or get people to have that kind of effect. So, but the complaint numbers are down more recently.
And answer your question, John? Thank you. Lisa? Jesse?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate the update. Okay, moving on to item number 10C, the Water Commission Monthly Update. Vice Chair Harshberger. Good to see you. Floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor Erickson, and council members. I think that item 1A is the recommendation and action for transferable water rights. If you'd like us to go over that first?
Please.
Okay. Well, with regard to the Pinchmark request, the request and calculations for transferable water rights are in your packet. Part of the request was to separate the water rights for Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the project. The commission unanimously agreed with the request and calculations and forwarded a recommendation to city council to establish a requirement of 4.75 acre feet for Phase 1 and 6.33 acre feet of transferable Edwards water rights for Phase 2. Phase 1 rights to be due before the filing of the final plat, and Phase 2 to be due before issuance of building permits for that phase of the project. So Mayor Erickson, back to you for questions and to take action as you see fit.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, so we have a recommendation from the Water Commission to approve the transferable water rights from Pinchmark Office Center Development. Counsel, do you have any questions? John?
No.
Okay. Lisa? Jesse?
No questions.
Todd? Okay. Okay. If that is the case, then may I have a motion to approve those, the recommendation from Water Commission?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Call it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously.
You didn't hear my "aye."
Carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and then you're still on the floor for your monthly update. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The commission recommended a leak adjustment to the city manager for action in the amount of $251.34 for a customer on Golexiana. So that's just information, and it was above the threshold for action by the water department by itself, but below the threshold for council action. So just providing that to you for information. We also discussed continued improvements to the water rate process and the leak adjustment procedures. Water Rate Subcommittee will meet with city staff this month to discuss roles and responsibilities to continue making progress on that effort. And then all commissioners are currently reviewing the recommended updates to the leak adjustment procedures in ordinance 54. We plan to discuss those recommendations at our next meeting, and hopefully have a recommendation to council in your next, next month. And our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, March 15th, at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. So I turn it back to you, Mayor Erickson, for any questions you may have on Water Commission activities.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the update. Any questions for the Water Commission? John? Lisa? To my left, Jesse?
No question, just a comment. You know, Chairman Mueller's son did the spreadsheet that Stephen's using to calculate which, you know, ocophor to get out of the Edwards or the Trinity. I just want to be sure he passes thanks on from the council for doing that. That's excellent that we'll be able to track it. He's got a cushion in there for leeway at the end, and takes into account any changes in the allowance. So, please thank you for that.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse. That's a great point. Todd? Kay?
No.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. Okay, 10D Wildlife Management Advisory Commission. They did not meet in February. No update at this time. Their next meeting is in April. On the 10E, the Parks Committee, Mr. Chamberlain. Good to see you, sir. Floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity. Our last general membership meeting for the committee was held on February the 9th, and our next general meeting will be next Wednesday on March 9th. Update on open items previously discussed with the council is ordinance number 24. A review session was held with the city administrator on the 16th of February. Good progress was made. We'll be taking those updates back to the committee for review so everyone stays in sync on that area. Accomplishments since last meeting, the total number of volunteer hours for the month of February managed by the Parks Committee was 62 hours. 54 were from the Parks Committee membership, plus eight from other volunteers outside of the committee. Our primary focus during the last 30 days has been working on the review and the potential updating of ordinance number 24. Also, punning sessions for the 4th of July celebration coming up, and a non-scheduled cleanup of Paul Davis Park. As you know, last month, we had severe, we had rain and ice and hard headwinds come, strong headwinds come into this area. And collectively, that caused a perfect storm, and we had about 40 to 50 trees that were seriously damaged because of that event. Paul Davis Park basically was because of the rain getting on the cedars, then icing up, and then the weight causing the breakaway of the branches and everything else. We did have four trees that actually were uprooted from that area. They were probably about 40 to 50 feet tall. Public Works did an outstanding job cutting down the hanging branches and removing branches which were completely torn away due to the heavy winds. I've already told you about the four trees. They've already gone ahead and removed over four trucks/trailer loads of debris from the park at this time. We will, they have not, they definitely were responsive from this point. The trails in the park were cleared away so that people could go out and continue to walk the trails. Plus, we also made it safe for any customer, any customers, I should say, members coming to the park to visit and play. Would like, though, to bring to the council's attention the great job that Public Works did do to go ahead and respond to it, not only in a timely manner, but they were very thorough in cleaning it up and making it prepared for our citizens from that area. Any final cleanup work will be done or managed during the upcoming Parks Committee cleanup on March the 12th. What's scheduled for the next 60 days? Prep work for the upcoming park is scheduled, and will be done next week. The spring cleanup that we're going to have at Paul Davis Park that was scheduled back in February will be on March 12th. Will start around 8:00 AM, and will finish around 12:00 noon, followed with lunch for the entire team. So if you want a delicious homemade lunch, join us, spend some time with us, and meet with your neighbors and have a good time. But it's homemade, and it's going to be delicious, a surprise. And the Potts is working on it. We're looking for volunteers 16 and older are welcome. If anyone wishes to volunteer and help with this cleanup, they should email the Parks Committee no later than next Monday at gardenridgeparks@gmail.com so we can properly assign cleanup activities, and more importantly, make sure we have the right amount of food available at lunchtime and refreshments. We'll continue working ordinance number 24, and we will continue working on planning and logistics for the city's 4th of July celebration. At this time, Mr. Mayor, any questions from you or the council?
Great job, Rod, as always. Counsel, any questions or comments for Rod Chamberlain?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Okay, 10F Volunteer Garden Ridge. Nancy, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. The month of February, there were 246 total volunteer hours in Garden Ridge. 61 of those hours was from the families of Garden Ridge as they cleaned up FM 2252. The Parks Committee had a total of 62 volunteer hours. Library, 114 hours, and the Bill Stuffing was nine hours.
Thanks, Nancy. We could get it done with all of our, without all of our volunteers throughout the city and the community, so thank you. That concludes item number 10. Onto item number 11, approvals and authorizations. The following items are for discussion, consideration, and possible action. 11A, Texas statewide opioid settlement agreements. Nancy, you have the floor again to give counsel a summary update.
As you may recall, in November of '21, council approved a resolution that authorized me to, or authorized our participation in opioid settlement agreements, as well as they authorized me to execute those settlement agreements. That was the original resolution. Since that time, there have been two additional opioid settlements that have come forward. And although the resolution authorizes me to actually sign any of these new settlements that come forward, I wanted to bring these to your attention, the two newest, and have your support to, do you want me to bring these, each one of these, back to you for updates, even though I'm authorized to sign those? Just kind of a little bit of direction on what counsel would like for me to do. The first one is the Indo settlement, and the second one we received was from the TIBA opioid settlement. At this time, I do not know the amount of funding that the city would receive. This time, the funding is unrestricted, so it doesn't have a specific specified use.
So counsel, what Nancy's asking in conjunction with her consultation with Cynthia is giving through consensus, we don't need a motion to give her permission to sign new releases as they come up, and then she just gives us updates as required, but doesn't require your attention as a governing body for her to act on that. And we can give a thumbs up. We got a consensus of thumbs up. Okay?
Thank you.
That completes that portion?
That completes that.
Okay. All right. Onto item number 11B, and there's an emergency preparedness and after-action update. So we've got a couple of really great things to talk about as a council and as a city and with, with all of our residents about the city of Garden Ridge and this governing body working for, to better our emergency preparedness and crisis management and crisis communication. You all remember when we started this process shortly after the last election, where one of the things we wanted to do was build upon our response from a year ago in February, build upon that with our lessons learned and go forward with a more concise, involved emergency preparedness plan as a city, and specifically our crisis communication plan. And your hard work and the city staff and all of our employees, their specific hard work that they're doing behind the scenes over the last 10 months, year really, since the last storm in February of '21, it paid off with how well everyone was prepared for the two rounds of cold weather and precipitation that we had this February. It wasn't anywhere near the, the crisis that February of '21 was, because we all had power, and it wasn't as much frozen precipitation as we had before. But we were ready for it as a city staff and employees. Your city was ready for it, and you were too, as a, as a council. I want to praise the city for its communication process amongst the department heads and city, and city staff. When the cold weather hit that first part of February, we were ready for it ahead of time. We had already communicated about it at least 48 hours in advance with Stephen's trip notice of, hey, we're going to make sure we go through prepared, preparedness anytime we know 48 hours in advance, or we're going to possibly have freezing temperatures and, and/or freezing precipitation. So we were ready for it. The chief and his outstanding police department, they were out early that morning, letting us know how the roads were, and it was a communication process between myself, Nancy, the department heads, and certain city staff. And we kept each other up to date, and I'm really proud of how well we responded and how well we did. That first round was mainly precipitation, frozen, just like Rod Chamberlain alluded to, freezing on the trees and limbs coming down. That's how we ended up losing power in certain areas of the city, was not a roving power outage by CPS this time, because they didn't need it. They were ready for it. It was downed power lines. That we got pretty quick response from CPS to come out and handle that, and our utility department, Public Works, and Police Department were in communication physically with these crews from CPS with their trucks out here fixing those lines. We kept each other up to date. You all received an update from Nancy saying, hey, counsel, here's what we're doing. Here's our plan. Here's what's next. We'll talk to you in a little bit. And if you had questions, you got right back to her, and she answered those questions. As the day went on, and we knew that certain residents, maybe in sections of the city, were going to be without power possibly through the night, we elected to open up a warming station, and we opened up the city council chambers, starting at 4:00 in the afternoon, four-hour shifts to monitor that, and we were ready to go to accept whoever needed to come to get warm and/or spend the night, that night, right here in council chambers. We were going to roll with it, and we were open and ready for business. The Garden Ridge Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association stepped up like that when they got the call from Chief Ron. Dr. Michael Crowe was here as our, our first supervisor, if you will, of, of our warming center for the first shift from 4:00 to 8:00. I think Mr. Ken Knijper was signed up for 8:00 to midnight, and then we were going to get other volunteers as necessary to take us through the night, including yours truly and city staff. So I applaud all the work that the city has done and that you have done and our citizens have done through the last year to be ready for this next event. Hopefully, we are through the, we're into March, and we're through that bad weather, and we are ready to go for our next round of events, whatever they may be. We will have a tabletop exercise with city council and city department heads and staff after the next election in May, where we will go through and work scenarios talking about crisis management, whether that's freezing precipitation with high winds, flash floods, tornadoes, hurricane, you name it. We'll go through that process. So it's, it's a success story to talk, to build upon the lessons that we learned a year ago and where we are today. So thank you so much for your support and your efforts. Some of you were here at the warming station, ready to go, and specifically, thank you to the city and all of our employees for what you've done. So, thanks. Thank you very much. Counsel, anything to add with that? Outstanding. We're going to continue the good news here. Okay, onto item number 11C, City of Garden Ridge logo. So this continues on with good things, good things happening in Garden Ridge. One of the other things besides emergency preparedness and crisis communication that this governing body set to press forward on with the city was marketing the city for development, future commercial development along FM 2252. We can't control what goes into what is developed on those lots. We have influence through our planning and zoning ordinance, and we have, so influence through that process, and we've just gone through a little bit of that, although that was residential tonight. But for the commercial development, we really wanted to get out there and market Garden Ridge to attract that high-end retail, that high-end restaurant. Ridge to attract that high-end retail, that high-end restaurant type of atmosphere, a place to gather that we're looking for in the city of Garden Ridge according to our master development plan. And in that process, we hired, we found the money and budgeted for and, and hired DFW Strategic Communications to help us not just with emergency preparedness and crisis communication, but marketing Garden Ridge through your approval. And we had some meetings with that, with them, and what they did last fall was interview a number of citizens and couples throughout the Garden Ridge community, and through about a half-hour process of questions on what do you wanna see, where do you wanna see Garden Ridge to go? How do you want that development along 2252 to work? What do you want it to look like? What's the most important thing to you about Garden Ridge? And overwhelmingly, it was the trees and the open country atmosphere as urban sprawl and industrial sprawl happened just outside our, our city limits. How do we keep Garden Ridge with that character? And we got some great, great feedback from our residents and citizens from those interviews from DFW Communications. One of the products of that is through citizens' input, DFW Communications came up with two possible logos or brands for the city of Garden Ridge. Now, we're not replacing our wonderful city seal. That stays, that's our city seal. What we're doing is coming up with a logo, a brand, to market Garden Ridge. This is, and put it on t-shirts, put it on signs, put it on our website, work with local chamber of commerce to help us attract the right type of developers for the, the landowners that we have. And today, tonight, hopefully, we get to make a decision, we reveal that, and you guys get to make a decision on what our logo and brand for Garden Ridge is gonna be. That was, I'm sorry, I took a little bit more time than I wanted to, but I wanted to drive that point home, that this has been a, a nine-month process, and we are coming to fruition now through your hard work and the city staff and DFW Communications. So with that, drumroll. Okay, so you have had this, this is our color palette. You've had this through email from Nancy and Marissa for about two weeks to look at these. This is the color palette through a lot of different meetings with, with our, with who we've contracted out to help us with this. This is the palette that the city staff, along with myself and the mayor pro tem, Lisa Swin, have come up with. So what do you guys think of this color palette? It's the same, they just, it looks different up on the screen. So it's, but it's the same one. Do you guys have questions or comments? I'll go down, just from my right on up. John, anything to add? Marissa, just for everyone in the audience and people watching at home or to watch later, can you and Kat maybe expound upon what this is gonna be used for and the different combinations that we'll have?
Sure. So basically, once we actually approve a logo, we're also approving the color palette to go along with it, and then we'll have DFW Strategic Communications assist us in creating what I would refer to as a guide, basically, and how these can and will be used. One example that I think is gonna be the biggest thing to, that most people will see is gonna be the website. So we're going through a website redesign that we've been preparing for, for a while, and it starts officially at the end of this month, a couple of weeks away. And part of that redesign, we've pushed it back, I think, three times now because we needed to wait until a logo was approved because there wasn't much point in doing a redesign just to have to try to change it later because you only get one redesign every four years. So all of these colors will be incorporated into the website. Basically, when you have a color palette, we're going to try to stick to these colors. I think the only reason that we would stray from these specific colors is if Civic Plus isn't able to put these exact colors in certain places, but it would have to be something that matches very close. I will say that the color palette was something that we all went back and forth on for quite a while, and it took us a little, couple tries to get to one that we all agreed on. And if you print these, they actually do look a lot different than on your screen, so I can imagine they look a little different on the screen in front of you versus the projector. But these colors that you see can be used in the actual logo. The options that we gave y'all only incorporate two because it would be, I think, a little obnoxious to try to incorporate six colors into one logo. So what DFW did was they chose two colors that complement each other, that represent Garden Ridge, to show us the logo using those two colors. But basically, once this is, if y'all approved this color palette, this was the colors that we have to choose from for social media posts, for the website redesign, anything that's gonna be branded with the city.
So with that in mind, this is the color palette that we have chosen through DFW StratCom to go along with the two logos that, that you have seen that we'll present here shortly. So, so we don't need approval on the color palette, just, hey, do you guys have comments before we go on to the logos? Good? Okay, let's go on to logo number one. So as you look at these, and you have looked at them before, think of our letterhead, think of cards, think of a t-shirt, a hat, a sign at the entrance of Garden Ridge with this color palette. So that's the first one. And let's go to the second one. So again, think of letterhead, website, cards, signs, t-shirts, hats, to brand Garden Ridge. And we'll open it up for discussion. Have at it.
Well, just to expound on the idea of a logo, Linda gave me a good word. I liked her hagiographer. I was reading earlier today, or earlier last week, about a hagiographer of city emblems. And city emblems started back in the 12th century in Europe with the development of heraldry, right? So heraldry is the profession that creates and regulates, you know, the coats of arms. So the nobility, you know, would have their specific coats of arms to identify each other. And this was at a time when there was a high illiteracy rate, so people couldn't read. But they could identify a symbol, they could identify, you know, they could attach a feeling or a, you know, strength or a trait with that coat of arms symbol, and that's sort of, kind of what we're, we're looking to do with the Garden Ridge logo. I mean, this is a seal, but it doesn't say anything necessarily about the identity of the city. And this has been in the works for nine months, and I don't think there's a better time than right now when we're talking about the 50th anniversary of Garden Ridge to really kind of, you know, focus on, on what the identity is. You know, it's, it's changed in the last 50 years. And I think we have an opportunity to move forward with a, you know, a fresh idea, a fresh look, some colors that reflect the natural beauty of Garden Ridge. Marissa, could you speak a little bit more about the fonts and the shape?
So I don't think the fonts, I don't think they're actually listed on this document, but, so there will be specific fonts associated with these that we would then use and apply so that basically everything, which I'm sure you, y'all know me well enough to know this makes me very happy, that everything will look very similar. We will, everything will, when we see something that Garden Ridge posts on our social media pages, all of our posts will, they all will look very similar to each other, like a lot of the other cities. Right now, our posts look similar mainly because it's, it's one person doing them, but it's not necessarily a, something that is reflective of the city of Garden Ridge that stands out and says, this is the city of Garden Ridge. I mean, besides our Facebook page saying Garden Ridge. But I can't remember off the top of my head what these exact fonts are. One of them might be bodega. But once, once the logos are, once a logo is approved, that would be part of the process of creating the branding guide that would give us the guidelines on what fonts we're gonna use, what's the primary font, what's the secondary font, and basically how we're going to use these. So it would guide city staff and council in the use of the logo and the brand.
And I wanted to point out, in that same vein, if you look, I mean, if you, if it hasn't occurred to you, that G and the R, that brand up top is leaf-shaped. You know, it's supposed to be, you know, represent the trees. And yes.
Just like the logo.
Well, kinda, kinda. We're talking representative, you know, I mean, and we thought about that almost in terms of like a, a, a brand for cattle. You know, you see that, that, you know, it's almost like a brand that, you're working towards getting just that symbol, like a Nike swoosh, you know, you recognize that as Nike, looking at, and in particular with this logo option as being, you know, the, the brand. I mean, I can see hats with just the, the leaf on it.
So basically, the idea is something that if it doesn't say Garden Ridge, Texas on it, eventually people will see that and say, oh, that's Garden Ridge. That, that is what we're aiming for. Again, those are leaves? Yeah. So these are just two, they, DFW Strategic Communications gave us these as options to choose from, and these are what their graphic designer came up with after interviewing our residents, talking with staff, talking with the mayor, mayor pro tem, learning about the city, researching us. I know they looked at our website and they were, they knew all about our city before they even started these designs. And so these are two, these are the two options that we brought to council that they have come up with based off of all of their interviews and all of their research that they feel and we agree feel represent the city.
They also wanted to make it unique to Garden Ridge and not just smaller city, Texas, anywhere. When you go online or Google search different logos and brands for different cities, these are unique, and they wanted to make sure based on their citizen input that it was unique to Garden Ridge, to do exactly what we're talking about doing, marketing our city. Jesse?
Yeah, I mean, I like the colors and I personally like this one.
Okay, thanks. Tom?
I'm good with the colors. I like option number two. On top of it being oak leaf-shaped, there's also a little bit of a hand kind of thing going on with it too, so I think it's more recognizable as we go through this, that just that separate logo, people are gonna go, oh, that's kinda cool.
Yeah, it's different and very modern. Thanks. Kay?
I have a comment on the first one, and I don't want it to sound snarky. Looks like Pac-Man. But I, I think it's too, too round, and I don't think the leaf concept is strong enough. So if I had to vote, I would vote on the second concept. The, the colors are okay, except they do represent, I mean, they do reproduce better on this screen than that because that has a, has a pea yellow up there, green. The second one, this, what struck me, the four, of the four options, to me, it's, it's reaching a little bit to achieve the GR. I like the softness of it, I think it looks like a religious symbol. And of the four, I think if you consider the lower right, the one that has the Texas on the vertical, that's probably the strongest in terms of if you, again, if you go back to the idea it'd be on a card, whatever, the others are too vertical, they could be, they could be difficult to reproduce, copy, additional copy on a card or signage or whatever, I think it reproduces better. A lot of it's gonna depend on the font chosen.
You bet. Great inputs everybody. John, anything else?
Yeah, I, if I were to choose one, it would be either the first one up here or the last one. I, I don't really care for the G's in either one of them, but they're, they're acceptable, you know, as far as I'm concerned, they're acceptable. Either I like this one or the last one.
So Marissa, can you clarify?
Yes. So what, what we were, what we are needing council to choose is between option one, the whole page, basically, that is just showing us the different ways that we can use it once you choose one or the other. Or you choose option two, and those are four different ways that it can be used depending on what you're using it for. So the one in the bottom right would be something that we use on letterhead because the other three just wouldn't look good on letterhead. You need something that is long and skinny like the one on the bottom right. Certain, the one on the bottom right probably wouldn't look the best on a hat, though. So you want something that is probably more like the one to the left of that or even the one above it. So we aren't asking you to choose one specific one from these pages, we are asking you to choose between option number one and option number two. I hope that clarifies it.
That clarified, John? Oh, yeah, okay, great. Further discussion? This is important, but we need to get it done tonight, based on where we need to go with this. Anything else? Okay. Are we ready to bring it to a vote? All right, so in order to do this, we would need a, a motion and a second. Number one. And back to door number two. So. This is a motion to approve this.
I move to approve logo option number two.
Second. We have a motion to approve logo option number two as the brand and logo for the city of Garden Ridge. We have a second. Do I have further discussion? We will call it to a vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, so this is the new brand and logo of the city of Garden Ridge. Good job, council. Good job to city staff and somewhere out there, thank you, DFW Strat Communications. Marissa, is there anything else that we need to do with that?
No, it's not this time.
Outstanding. Thank you, council. We'll go on to 11D, city of Garden Ridge 50th anniversary update. We had our last meeting a week ago Tuesday, our next meeting is this coming Tuesday, we meet once every two weeks. We are done brainstorming, we are making decisions and pressing forward with, with some wonderful events that we're gonna have to celebrate our 50th anniversary, which is actually the 6th of July, we're gonna celebrate that on or about the 4th of July. So there are a lot of great things going on. I'll pass it to a member of the 50th anniversary committee, Kay Bauer. Kay, do you have anything else that you'd like to add, stuff that we're working on before we get on to some other specifics?
Just, I would reiterate that I really, 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 really welcome citizens reaching out to us, any one of us, if you prefer me or any one of us, with ideas for what we addressed before, the. what we addressed before, the, I just went out of my head again, the thing in the ground. The time capsule. Yeah, that thing. Anyway, we have, we have, I've obtained a quote from a local source about constructing our own, and we'll be discussing the dollars on that. And I've looked, and of course, as you might imagine, Amazon sells them as well, but they're too small. So, we, I really, we welcome that. And this, there is also another organization that provides conceptual ideas for what to incorporate. And I'll be bringing that to the meeting next week as to additional ideas other than what we've already proposed. We do, again, to reiterate, we do have the margarita truck committed, and we are talking to another liquor source and have some options there. So, it's just, everything is cranking along. I will say it's March, and it's getting a little scary. But we really need input. I mean, we have a committee, and we have a council, but we would love to have input. There are certainly things we've not thought of. We would more than, we would just really welcome input that you might have. If there's anything else?
Oh, thank you, Kay. That, that does it. We have a lot of people working really hard. We want to have a big party celebration right here outside of City Hall with a live band that we've talked about before, Mothership, playing Queen and Led Zeppelin and 70s music because we were 1972, 50 years old, among other things that we're not quite ready to go public with yet. But we can't wait until April to do that. So, one thing, council, that will require your action tonight, if you are so inclined, we have allocated $2,500 in our fiscal '22 budget, which obviously you've already approved long ago, for, for this 50th anniversary. What we would like to do is, through a motion, add $2,500 to that so that we can take the total up to $5,000 as we start to get more and more sponsors coming in. And the sponsorships are rolling in, and the money's rolling in, and we need your permission to allocate that up to $5,000 if we can. And that would require a motion. Nancy, anything else to add on that?
No.
Okay. All right. So, the motion would have to be, if you are so inclined, would be moved to approve an additional $2,500 for a total of $5,000 for, for line item advance payments and deposits. Does that work? Okay. If you're so inclined.
I make the motion to approve, to request an additional $2,500, as stated, for the 50th anniversary celebration.
Okay, we have a motion to bump it up $2,500 to $5,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Call it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you very much for that action, council. Okay, that takes us to 12 updates. So, 12 A-City Council projects, bulk dumpsters and brush along FM 3009. Jesse.
Okay. Again, I want to thank all of those that've covered and, you know, covered their, their brush loads and tied down everything. You know, like Stephen mentioned, we had five extra days in March, you know, for all the, you know, brush, picked up eight dumpsters worth. But I did see a lot of, some brush out there. I, in one case, I did see two of Stephen's, two Public Works employees picking up stuff that was on 3009. So, it came out of somebody's vehicle. So, I thank Public Works for picking that up and making the road very safe. But again, continue, we're in another month here. Continue to tie down things and cover, cover your brush. So, I'm bringing it up very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse. I'm going to add to that a little bit with just a little praise, again, to our city staff with the bulk dumpsters for offering in an even month after bad weather and downed tree limbs from the weather, opening up our bulk dumpsters for citizens to come in and dump their debris and wheat. How many did we fill up? Eight. I mean, that's, that's huge. What a, that's a great service that the city's providing to our community, our residents. So, thank you. And Nancy, that was your idea. So, thanks on that. Go ahead.
Oh, you're quite welcome.
Yeah.
This past weekend was not a bulk dumpster weekend, but there was a tremendous amount of items that were laying along 3009 between Trophy Oaks Drive and Showenthal. And thank you to Stephen and his staff. They went out and picked up those items that were the most noticeable. I mean, we did not do every little thing along the roadside, but the most notable, most dangerous pieces were picked up.
Thanks for doing that. Stephen, pass on to, to our guys out there in Public Works. Thanks. That's just awesome. Appreciate that. Nancy, anything else?
No.
Jesse, anything? Counsel, anything on that item? Okay. We will go on to item number 13, Discussion of Future Agenda Items. To my right, John. Lisa? Jesse? Todd? Kay? That was easy. Okay, on to item number 14, Citizen Comment Period, Round Two. You are not required to sign up to speak, but if you wish to come up and address the DIAS, two minutes. Anybody interested? Okay, we will move on. No one's interested. And move on to item number 15, Reports and Comments from Mayor and City Council Members on the Different Community Organizations. Updates to my right, reports.
February the 22nd, we have another Eagle Scout, Ryan Johnson. I'm going to work on getting those guys in here, April or May meeting. I think we've got a couple, three, four, and we want to bring in.
Yeah, man, bring them in. That's outstanding. Congratulations, Ryan, by the way. Way to go. Kay?
Um, yes, on behalf of the Women's Club, the short-lived garage sale has been canceled for lack of interest. So, will not be on April 2nd this year, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. Families of Garden Ridge Adopt a Highway Program for FM 2252. Thanks to everybody that showed up in February. It was a record, a record. We had 46 bags of trash, 750 pounds of trash and debris, and 61 volunteer hours. So, that was our record for one of the most successful and consistent adopt-a-highway programs in South Central Texas. With that in mind, our next pickup is going to be Saturday, April 2nd, and we will be competing in and participating in the annual Tex dot Trash Off. Did I get that right, Marissa? Kat?
Close.
Trash-a-thon?
Don't mess with Texas Trash Off.
What is it? Sorry?
Don't mess with Texas Trash Off.
Don't mess with Texas Trash Off. I want to win it. So, again, we'll be gathering at Northeast Bible Church Front Parking Lot, 8:00 in the morning. You get a nice orange safety vest that's yours to keep as a parting gift. Come on out and help us pick up trash that day. I'd love to see members of the DIAS.
How do you win a trash off?
By picking up all the trash on the side of the road, four miles worth, from 3009 all the way down to Marbach Lane, other side of the road, all the way back up.
Is it number of bags?
Pounds.
Pounds, bags, participants. Yeah. So, and you get to, we get to interact with members of the community and beautify the community. So, we're going to win, and come on out, please.
I want to lose that one, mayor.
No, no, man.
I don't want that much trash on our roads.
We shouldn't have it. So, I wish, I wish it was, I wish that wasn't the case. Okay, Northeast Partnership, they are, tonight, we were invited to, obviously, we can't attend the, our Northeast Partnership mayors are meeting with Senator Donna Campbell, Kyle Beederman, and other state officials and county officials for Guadalupe County to discuss issues that affect them this year and during the election. I sent a letter of support to Mayor Contreras from Marion, who is the president of the Northeast Partnership, saying that what affects them affects the city of Garden Ridge. Even though we are not represented tonight, we can't attend, they have our full support based on our conversation that we had last week when we met together in our mayor's workshop last Wednesday night. So, they're meeting tonight, and they'll give me a report in the morning. They have our full support. So, because what affects shirts, civilo, and the surrounding area affects Garden Ridge. Davenport High School, they have this Saturday, a, they're, the Junior Rotse Color Run, and I don't, do anybody know what time it starts? It starts at 9:00 in the morning at the, at the stadium out back, and it's $15 per participant. There's going to be a car show. No car show?
No, no.
Okay, he never caught, never talked to you?
Okay, I talked to him, but I never got any more.
Okay. We'll see what they have, but they're looking for our support for that as well. And I think that's, that's all I've got. We'd love to see you next Thursday night, all of you, the next Thursday afternoon at the Northeast Partnership Luncheon, as well as the next Kamau County Luncheon. So, love to have you there. Go Garden Ridge. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, with that, we'll close out number 15. Number 16, Executive Session. The city council will recess its open meeting and reconvene in executive session. 16A pursuant to Texas Code, Government Code, Section 551.071 and 551.0712, consultation with attorney, and 551.072 deliberations about real property. One, to deliberate purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person and legal advice on the same. Waste water utility easement acquisition and property acquisition for city building project and related matters. Item number two, to receive legal advice regarding revisions to ordinance number 210. Number three, a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional contact, conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, regarding possible computer slash data breach, mayor's access, and personal computer and related investigation. So, with that, we will, we will close, or we will recess our open session at 8:49 PM, and then we'll reconvene in this chamber at 9:00 for executive session. Thank you. 27, 10:28 PM on Wednesday, the 2nd of March. Item number 17 out of executive session, business items. We have no business items to address out of executive session. Moving on to item number 18, adjournment. Can I have a?
I've moved to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at 10:28 PM. Thank you.